All right. You can come to order. Stand with the wood.
Let the ladies and gentlemen clap at the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone read last month's minutes?
Yes.
Yes. Any but one was to approve or?
I'll make a motion to approve. It's the last month.
Sorry.
All favor?
Aye.
One more person.
That's all right. Now you gotta close the regular meeting and open the public hearing.
Okay. Well, now close regular reading and open the new business public meeting.
The public hearing is for me to state what the budget for 2025 will be. The general budget estimate is $204,385. That's with the maximum estimated funds to be raised of $175,967. The current tax levy is $169,190 with a 4.01% tax levy. Local road and streets budget estimate is $9,900. MVA, which is motor vehicle highway, budget estimate is $15,160. The cigarette tax, which is the CCI, we use for street, our sidewalks and trees, is $3,561. Special fire territory protection general is $97,860 for the budget estimate. Maximum estimated funds to be raised is $113,012. Their current tax levy is $108,646 with 4.02%. Special fire territory equipment replacement, $22,401 is the budget estimate. Maximum estimated funds to be raised is $23,171. Current tax levy is $23,171 with a 0.00%. That gives the grand total of the budget estimate of $353,267. Maximum estimated funds to be raised, $312,150, and a current tax levy of $301,007,000. That's it. Anybody have any questions? Any of y'all have any questions?
I looked at it very briefly this afternoon. And the only thing I noticed, which obviously was the legal services took a big hike.
Yeah, because we didn't have, I didn't put anything in there last year, but there was an additional appropriations added. So it ended up being, I think, like $10,000, $11,000 something for this year.
When I was comparing '24 to '25, there was stuff with the MVA and streets and stuff like that. But I didn't have anything for '24. I don't know if I did print it all or what. Because what I was doing, I was just comparing.
Right.
You know?
Yep.
So based on that, I've had it look, I mean, you know, what you raised is only $25,50 bucks.
I raised all the utilities and the insurance and all that. 5%, I think. 3% or 5% as the utilities.
Yeah, but it wasn't like, you know. I just didn't have anything to look at for the street department and the MVA. And I said, I don't know if when I printed '24, it impressed all of it.
Right.
So I didn't have anything there to compare with. But from what I saw, I thought it looked okay.
Okay. So you can, if there's no other questions from anybody, you can close the public hearing and then call for a motion to approve this resolution.
Okay. At this time, we'll close the public meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the '25 budget.
No seconded. All favor?
Aye.
We're just approving the resolution right now. Next month is the actual adoption meeting.
Okay. Well, I make a motion to do whatever it is.
The resolution.
Whatever you said, yeah.
Right.
So you motion, motion to approve the resolution?
Yep, and Michael seconded it in. I think everybody said all in favor.
Do you know why I wouldn't have that information from '24?
No, because I emailed the same thing I emailed you this year as well I emailed you last year. So, I mean, I can print it from last year. I can make you a copy of last year's.
If you could, if it doesn't take you over a long time for me to search it through 82,718 emails.
I've got it in my 2024 folder, so I can make a copy next, or tomorrow.
I would just kind of like to see, you know, what the difference is, if there is any difference. A lot of stuff didn't change, so.
Okay, you can move forward. Mr. Moans?
What is the discussion about the comp time and lunches?
That is, Mr. Gray asked for me to put that on there.
Mr. Gray, what is your concern about that?
As far as the comp time, so we had originally agreed that the comp time that the guys were going to be used for doctor's appointments and stuff like that is what we had talked about on that side of it. And that it's still, operating hours are still 4:30 or 7:30 to 4:00. Whether or not it still falls under comp time to come in early just so they can get off early, is that still part of it? Because I know we talked about as far as crossing this bridge when it happens and whether or not.
Well, we did agree, we did discuss that during the hot weather, that it was acceptable for them to come in earlier.
Right.
And work for eight hours.
Right.
And that's, that part of discussion I remember.
I don't remember discussing someone being able to come in early just so that they could have time to go to a doctor's appointment. I don't remember any kind of discussion like that.
Well, that was the reason as far as, well, I mean, as far as comp time. So in other words, since we switched it over to comp time as far as the 40 hours a week, that like with David as far as having a new baby to where he doesn't really get penalized. And if he wants to come in early, then he can do that and go to his doctor's appointment, then come back and finish his lunch, or finish his work. Same way with Kyle having one too on the way to be able to leave during the middle of the day. Because the way that it was set up was that they had to use comp time or?
They had to use PTO.
PTO.
When we changed it to eight hours a day to calculate overtime, that eliminated their comp time. So it was decided to change it back to 40 hours a week on calculating comp, or overtime. So that enabled them to use comp time. If they were going to be a half hour late or had to leave a half hour early, they could work a half hour over another day without it constituting overtime. So his thing is, should they be allowed to use comp time just because they want to? Or should there be a documented reason for using comp time?
Because the operating hours are from 4, 7:30 to 4:00, as of right now. Because we did have that discussion about, or, you know, it was just briefly talked about as far as the five-day work week.
Like in the past, if they left two hours early, they'd work, usually would work a half hour over the other four days. That would make up their two hours. Not come in at 5:30 in the morning the next day to make up the two hours they left early the day before. See what I'm saying?
Kind of.
Kind of.
So we decided that wasn't acceptable?
No, that's why he's asking.
Oh, ever we, oh, okay.
What you guys consider acceptable.
I think as long as they're covering their time, if they have to come in two hours early or two hours late or an hour early, an hour late, I think that's fine. It's okay with me. I don't see any problem with it. Unless somebody else has an opinion.
Sounds good to me.
The only question I have, and this was brought up to me. Because I'm trying to help out with our, I don't even know the perfect word for it other than vandalism in the restrooms and apartments. By stopping there every evening when I come home just to see if there's anybody that's used it and not, well.
Yeah, I've used it.
They've used it and just left it?
Yeah. I was stopping in too, by the way.
Huh?
I was stopping in the evenings to check it out.
So that way, if it would happen again, we have a little bit more of a timeline. Because it looks like it's happening more on the weekends. Now, when I stopped there Friday, I noticed that there was a, an event going on in one of the shelters. Did you rent shelter one for Friday?
The text that I got was that it was rented Friday. It's written on my calendar in there, but usually Trish and the guys are the ones that watch the calendar. I forgot to look. But when I text and asked for them to check the calendar to see if it was rented over the weekend, I was told that it was rented for Friday and that they would check to see if there was anything on Saturday or Sunday.
Okay. Because when I stopped there, I noticed that there was a party going on. Well, I won't say party, but.
Most people are very good at renting them, but it's not a requirement to rent them.
So when I stopped there Saturday morning, you know, of course, the trash was full. They did bag it up, but I did let Kyle know that there was that trash there and I can get the dumpster. And he said, well, if I have to come in for, you know, like that situation or I find that somebody had destroyed the bathroom, he doesn't feel that he should use comp time if he has to come in and clean that up on the weekends. He thinks it should be considered overtime.
He would have to call a council member until department heads are assigned and get approval to do that. Because overtime is supposed to be approved. So he would have to call and make sure that it was okay for him to come in and do that, to get paid overtime.
Well, if I happen to see it and I call him, is that considered an approval for him to come in?
You gotta, you gotta agree. It can't just be one of.
Okay, so I would have to text everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I didn't know what the procedure was. So far, it's.
And that's why I've been telling whoever works on the weekends, if there's a reservation, because not going to pay overtime just to come in and hang a sign on the shelter that it's reserved. I know he's questioned that, but that's why. I tell whoever's working on the weekend that there's a reservation so they can put the sign in their truck and put it on the shelter when they come in to do their checks.
Okay. That was my only question was how was we, how would that be handled if? I noticed that. And you know, it wasn't a problem for me to drag that bag of trash over to the dumpster and just get it opened, but somebody did because the next day.
I got it.
It was, the next day I peeked in there and it was in there, so.
And the other thing, Shane had sent out a text message a little while back about the guys' lunches are supposed to be 30 minutes and going in and eating lunch in Richmond, that exceeds the 30-minute timeline, the time window?
Yeah, I would say so.
Yeah. Yeah. Unless they're just going in and getting fast food and coming back in, but.
Depending on where you go.
Yeah.
If, I mean, you'd have to hit this end of it to make it in 30 minutes and be, and hope that there's not 16 people in line ahead of you.
For sure, yeah. Yeah, exactly.
So I don't know what you guys want to do about that, so.
I actually have already talked to the guys about that.
Okay.
They called and asked me about that, about cashing checks. And I told them, I said, that, that should be considered personal time and not. And if you want to do that, that's fine, but you got to clock out to do it. It's got to be a lunchtime.
So do you guys want to make it like it was when Sean was here? And if you leave town on your lunch, you have to clock out and clock back in? Unless you're just going to the bank to cash your check and coming back on payday. But if you're going to leave to go take care of personal business on your lunch, you need to clock out or you have to clock back in.
I always thought it was a good idea for them to clock in, clock out at the very beginning, but I was outvoted. So I am going to, on that part.
Well, the thing is, you, shouldn't be an issue as far as on that side of it, you know?
I'm sure they get tired of the mini mart or the restaurant, but.
But the lunches going to Buffalo Wings have to stop?
I mean, it's only, it's only a pickup order. It's not.
Have you ever sat down and ate there?
One time. It was all three of us.
Yeah. How long were you there?
At least probably inside, maybe 25, 30 minutes.
So it was like an hour and 50 minutes by the time you left here and got back here?
No.
What if I proved you wrong?
There's, there's no way it was going that long.
I can prove you wrong on that side of it, so. And then like I said, Shane dealt with it as far as, because he got the phone call because it was the same thing. So I think if they leave town to go eat lunch, they need to clock out or cash their checks, they need to clock out and drive their own vehicles.
Yeah, they should drive their own vehicle. I don't mind on the thoroughly in town, on town business. But if they're going to be, I think that if they do end up out of town longer than they're supposed to, that they should report it at least. But then clocking out solves that problem.
It does.
I will say, I have seen one of the town tracts coming from Richmond at 7:05 a.m. Multiple times.
Yeah.
Because I pass them. And I don't know why they would be in Richmond at Central Park.
I would just pull the time clock, time cards, because I look at them. So you can take a look at it and you'll know exactly what the deal is, to cross-reference.
Was it after Northeastern? Past Northeastern, where you passed them?
Yes, it was at Tango Road.
Oh.
No. Because of the time clocks that I look at, they're usually clocking in at 7:30, so. On that, so.
Okay.
Okay, so if they leave, do we need to, I'm sorry?
You guys need to relay that to each one of them so that way it isn't, I didn't know.
Yeah.
Because if I don't think to do it and then it gets brought up, then.
Okay. So do this instant thing we need to add or change to the personnel policy?
No, it's not in.
Clocking out for lunches.
If you're going to make it conditional on whether they're going to, if they're leaving on personal business, if you're going to make them do it every day, then that would be another change to a personnel policy. If you're going to make it conditional, then you just need to let each one of them know and then let them know if they get caught doing it without clocking out, that that's an offense.
Yeah. So when you cash your checks, we need to clock out, right?
Yes.
Unless you're going to town on town business for something else, which I pay the Comcast bill on high now. So unless you guys are going to the store to get something, there isn't anything that I have sent you to town for anymore.
Any other input on that? Does that sound good?
Yeah.
All right, okay.
All right.
Passing it on. All right. So now we need to talk about the personnel policy.
I emailed that to all y'all. I didn't, I forgot to print one off. So I got to run and print one off, but it's just the changes that.
It was just those two changes, correct?
Was discussed last month.
Yes.
So let me print it off real quick. It'll take me but a second.
Sorry, I'm rough.
Still wondering?
Yep, every Saturday. Still restricted before I was today, but I'm still there. My little guy is still in September.
So I changed the verbiage for the council meeting day back to the way it was before. They didn't attend, so it says.
It's like the one where they leave at 2:00, correct?
Work week is Thursday, 4:00 p.m. through Thursday at 3:59 p.m. Except for town council meeting days. The employee that will be attending the meeting may clock out at 2:00 p.m. and be present for the entire council meeting. That's the way they did it before. So that's that change. And then the other one is. Full-time labor grades, 1, 2, and 3 employees and town marshal, whether hourly or sourly, shall be entitled to five paid personal and/or sick days off annually upon commencement, commencing employment. These will be prorated according to the month hired. Five paid personal and/or sick days off each successive year of employment thereafter as of the beginning of each new year. These days are not eligible for rollover. Any days not used in a calendar year will be forbidden.
Is this something we need to vote on?
Yeah.
All right. All right, who, can we get a motion to approve the changes in the personnel policy?
No, make a motion to approve the personnel policy changes.
Same. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Department reports, who's going to read the first one?
We don't have to read them anymore.
Yes, say if everything's okay and if they need to order anything.
Okay.
We just, yeah, we just got to talk about these things that they, they need.
Things needed to vote on.
About exerciser quotes.
They were nice to definitely knock that one.
Thank you.
I know that you guys had talked about this. I don't think I was here. I look back. You guys had talked about with the amount of money that's been coming out of the water as far as they going in the wrong direction about holding off until possibly next year. On that, that discussion has been had, but like I said, if we want to revisit it, that's fine.
Is something we were wanting to put off then until next year?
That's what was already, I mean, that's what was discussed, yes.
Okay, card.
As far as with them being the newer valves, as far as turning them on that.
And what department is this for?
Water.
I'll make the motion. We hold off on this till next year.
A second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good one, Steve. And what about the trash pump? Three pumps on three separate sheets, special water. That's not this portable pump, right?
Yes.
It is? Okay, all right.
That's the one they talked about last month, but they said quotes weren't for the exact same one, so they had to get one for.
Oh, okay.
It's still Harbor Freight is still the cheapest.
What's that called, trash?
Well, here it's called a trash pump.
Yeah. Just allows beer debris to get through it.
Yeah.
And the ones that we do have haven't been taken care of, so they're not running at this point. They only have the two-inch, two-inch as of right now, so.
So you don't have one down there?
That's why we pulled it back up to shop, but, I mean, it's just, we haven't really dove into much of it yet because.
What brand is it? They're old.
I can find out tomorrow. Send you a picture in the morning.
Yeah. They need to be rebuilt. I mean, as far as, they're still good, but they just haven't, they've been left outside.
By the time you rebuild them, you're going to have almost what it's costing.
I know. It's cheaper to go this route with the $8.99 one than it is looking to rebuilding it.
Yeah. Well, the pump is still good and it's just spark blowed and you need to clean the fuel.
They didn't have three beds. It was all, it was two.
And they were all different. They weren't the same.
Sorry, I lost you there.
Yeah, me too.
So we put it off till next, we put it off till next month.
How weird.
Moved it on, yeah. What about bleach and blocks?
No, you had to vote on the.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
No, we didn't vote last month.
No, I mean.
Just how you don't vote. Trash pumps.
That was for the exerciser to hold off.
Can I get a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to purchase the trash pump from Harbor Freight. And the price is $8.99, which is the cheapest. There's three of them here. There's $17.99, $14.29, and then Harbor Freight's is $8.99, which is the cheapest.
Right, do I get a second on that? Motion?
May I change his motion?
Sure.
By two of them.
Oh.
Because you need one down there.
I was going to say that we used to.
And never move it.
Well.
That's just for that down there.
But they can't just leave it down there because there's no way to secure it, so.
In that building with the generator, that's where the old one was at for years.
Yeah, but they haven't been left there. They've been sitting out up at the building up there.
I think you mean when Ron was here, that's where it was.
Yeah, when Ron was here, that's where it was.
Two of the bigger ones we pulled out of the lagoon shed and I think the chlorine just ate them alive eventually.
Oh, wow.
We pulled them out. It wasn't much longer after me and Walker started.
So wherever we keep it at, in the park?
All three of ours are up at, back at shop now.
I don't have a problem getting two of them as far as having a backup on that side of it. But I think that they need to be left up there at the garage because if the guys are going there, they got to throw them in their truck. I don't have a problem getting two of them as far as having a backup on that side of it, but I think that they need to be left up there at the garage, because if the guys are going there, they gotta throw them in their trucks and take them. Just so. We know they're out of elements, they see them more often on that side of it.
Okay, so.
See, if we did keep it in the park, where would it be?
In the generator shed.
Which is where the chlorine is.
Not at the park.
Not at the park.
Not at the park.
But that's not where you're pumping at, is it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Where?
At the park. That's in case.
The trash pump is for out at the lagoon.
I mean, that's where we mostly use it.
Yes, so.
For in like water.
There's one at the park. In case we have total failure. Pump failure. So if you had to discharge. And clean water out of. Out of the pump basin. You discharge it right to the river. And that's why that pump was always down there.
The one that goes to the river on the south side of the road, that's all gravity fed, it doesn't. Isn't it?
No, there's a pump in that pit.
No, there's, I think there's two pumps in there, and one's out right now.
Yeah, there, there's two pumps at the lift station at the park. And then on the other side, it's HCRs, that controller discharge from the lagoons.
Right, and all that is gravity fed.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so there is no. We can't pump out of those other tanks anywhere, because that's all sealed line.
No, talking about where the pumps are at. Right. They've had to. Pump out of that. Especially during the real heavy rains. Because the pumps couldn't handle the excess water. And pump it directly into the river.
He's talking about the few times, it's been a while, but the water at the park was up to level with twenty-seven.
Right, yeah.
So there has been water issues that bad at the park, so I think that's what.
But if that pump is in a shed down there and it's flooded out, that pump's flooded out.
Well, there should be somebody down there, but then. To take care of that.
Talking about the middle of the night.
Yeah, no matter.
By the time they get there, it's already flooded.
I mean, the generator's flooded, and it's not one around.
Right.
So you're not gonna have any pump service down there. To pump the waste to the lagoons.
That three inch pump isn't gonna pump to the lagoons. That trash pump, will it?
No, it'll pump it out to the river.
You can't pump raw sewage into the river.
Yeah, we don't.
Good.
I was withdrawing that one day, it rained hard, he said, I'm going to the rip, to the park, I'm gonna withdraw, and there's only one here.
And if you wanna get two of them, that's fine with me, just so, I mean, we do have.
We'll have backup. If nothing else.
Okay. Michael, motion two.
My motion two.
You go on second motion, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay.
You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're getting two.
Yes.
Yes, two.
Okay. Two of this one.
Okay. Now we'll discuss the leak box, any discussion needed on that? Just maybe the materials, roughly three hundred dollars. To build a new one.
Whatever, we're gonna need a leak box, we're gonna need it soon.
Yep. So no discussion on that, that's acceptable?
Um, it needs to be taken care of this time, if something has to be repaired, we don't just disassemble it and throw it away.
Sure.
You know, once that leak box is built, it needs to be painted, and it needs to be stored inside to wear it last.
We, we talked about being able to back the truck up in and use one of the beams that's in the barn to be able to like.
Yeah. It just needs to be taken care of, cause the last one was.
It's actually pulling it off.
It's agreeable.
Yeah.
But I mean, the last one wasn't taken care of, it just, it had a couple, two spots that needed to be patched. And now we have to buy a whole new one, which is not acceptable by me whatsoever. On that side of it, but. I'll make a motion to spend three hundred dollars, not any more, without council's approval. On a leak box that's gonna be painted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. And any question about getting the dump truck alignment done?
What's going on with it?
There's, so. It'd be the passenger side tire. Walker just seen it today, um, inside tires. Worn out, and I mean, there's, there's play in the steering wheel when you're driving, so.
But I mean, it could be an hour, it could be a.
Could, I mean, I'd say at least just. Able to get it in for an inspection, inspection to see if there is a problem with it, it might not be, but.
As far as vehicles, we don't have to approve on that, it just take it in there and have it looked at, and then.
And then get, if the quoted work is over. Is large enough, then that, that's what they bring in and get.
We just seen it today, so I figured, might as well throw it on there.
You know, I know that the street truck was.
Greensport alignment is usually who we use for that stuff.
I think the Explorer's going.
I think the street truck's been driving fine.
But, I mean, did he ever get it looked at? Cause the transmission was messing up, he said it was out, and then all of a sudden it was working fine, did it ever get looked at?
Um. I, he had it in Speedy Pete's, I don't remember if that's what. That was for.
I was just wondering, I never heard anything else on it, so I was just asking.
I remember him taking it to Speedy Pete's, I don't remember what that was for, but. I'll ask him later on.
So you can more or less take it in, get it looked at?
At Speedy Pete's?
You can take it there, I, Greensport alignment is usually where we. I don't know if he does alignments either, I know he does.
I'd call him and see if he does alignments, if not, then I'd get ahold of Greensport. Cause that's where the Explorer's going.
All right, moving on, uh, this is four. Does anyone have anything they'd like to vote on?
She's gonna make you go stand with her.
My office, she'll have my book and everything. Hi, I'm Rhett Foster, and I'm here on behalf of Fountain City Forward.
I'm Anthony Johnson, I'm also here for Fountain City Forward.
And we have another board member as well, Terry Reese, kind of in that audience.
Make me come and stay.
You gotta volunteer today, yeah.
Um, we are coming before you because we're hoping in December to have a home for the holidays celebration in Fountain City. Think Hallmark, but smaller, and, um. We are hoping to do a tree lighting ceremony and offer. Some treats and, um, drinks like hot cocoa and coffee and, um. All of that, so with that comes, um, a really cool opportunity for Fountain City, um. For us to get and plant a tree that can be used yearly in the park. Um, and have the community come together to decorate and add decorations, and then have an actual lighting time. We already have a date set, that if it works, then that would be great, on December seventh. And, um, what we're thinking is something, this is also very early, because we need permission first to do this. Um, but something from six thirty to seven thirty-ish, six thirty to seven, community members could come and bring. Um, ornaments that have their names on them, or their family's name, or in memory of. And decorate the tree, and then at seven o'clock, we have a lighting, and then, um, from seven until seven thirty, have the opportunity for snacks, treats. Um. Some mentioned caroling, I will not lead that, um, but anyhow, um, I'll turn it over to Anthony, who has done some research on the tree. And we have pictures that you guys can take a look at with information.
So they, the committee asked me to come. And find the tree, so I went to Faust and got a price. For a tree and the price about planting it, which we're covering that. We're gonna pay for all of it, so this tree is ten feet tall. It's a spruce. It was very nice. So we looked, actually, your husband and I looked at some places, possible places, which we would want your input on that. It could go in the park, we want it somewhere close to where we can plug it in, obviously, and there were just a couple places near the sign.
The brick Fountain City sign?
Yeah, that one, too bad.
To it, so that would be a logical place to plant it. Um, Faust is willing to plant it, the sooner the better.
Yeah, they want it, he really wants to plant it in September, if possible, he said that, it would be the best.
And.
As far as.
Again, we're willing to cover the price of the tree and the planting, and then Fountain City Forward would just be responsible for kind of the upkeep of it for. The duration, um, and I volunteered that after the ceremony, if, if we did it on December seventh, for the month of December, it would be lit each night. My husband volunteered to put up, um, a timer on the tree light, so that it would only come on in the evenings. Just overnight, and then turn off in the morning, so that it wouldn't run all day, every day. And, um, then at the end of the holiday season, right after Christmas, I'll collect the ornaments, and I'll be personally responsible for them. I'll remove them, collect them, and then we'll have them next, hopefully, an annual event, have them next year, and then people can continue to add to them as well. Every year.
We'd like to have it someplace where it's visible, though when you come into town, you'll be able to see it.
That'd be a drawing point, especially, we were talking about vandalism earlier, um, even talking to family that lives out of town, they said, where are you going to put it, is it gonna be here, where? And up front, close to the sign, where it's well lit, would be a great spot. Just to keep an eye on it as well. Obviously, we would not recommend anybody bring. Expensive ornaments, but just something for their family.
Can you use more of the underground? Water buried?
Yeah, not right offhand, though.
You'd have to pick a day to get with Kyle and a guy, and kind of pick a spot, so that way he can.
Mark a future release.
And call eight one one dig and make sure that everything's okay with however far down you gotta dig to paint the tree.
Eight one one won't tell us where that line is buried. Cause that's our line.
I meant anything besides water.
But Kyle would know the lines, where the lines are buried?
The water and sewer ones, they were, eight one one would know the electrical and the gas.
Okay.
But we've got a power line that goes from. I think it's the shelter, and then. Goes over to that first shelf or.
And we're hoping. More toward, it would be on the south end, more kind of valid. Do you know what, I, I should have, I should have heard it on the.
Really the better, the best spot would have been like right in front of your plaque thing, but I don't want us to block that. You know what I mean? That spot right there would have been the best spot for it, but I think the tree's too big, and you wouldn't want it blocking that. So it needs to go one direction or the other, probably from there.
Yeah.
But we could keep, it's not real wide, and I think we could keep it trimmed and keep it kind of, you know.
Right. If you guys just let me know what, a weekday that you could come during the day, and we could arrange, or set it up with Kyle. To meet you guys down there, so that way you could.
We're both teachers, so.
That would be Beth Williams, Williams, who will probably come during the day.
Yeah.
She has a little more flexibility, right. Yeah, for sure. Um, we just need approval from you to plant the tree.
Where. The cable that runs down there.
Mm-hmm.
Which side of that cable were you thinking?
So. Inside, inside, right, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it can't be on that, on twenty-seven side of that cable, cause that's all state ground.
Yeah.
We're going into that with their trees.
But we don't have a problem with you guys telling us where you want it, you know, we just want to donate the tree and having. The event and that type of thing, so, um, I mean, I'm fine where you guys choose. It could go in the center there in the park, but the thing is, I'm thinking if people wanna play volleyball or do something in that one center area, they may not want a tree right there in the middle, so, you know, you gotta.
And again, we're building on community, this is a community, so we want people to come into town and go, wow, that looks really cool, you know, that looks good.
You need to buy the brick sign.
So something up front, just for that.
I think so.
Ideal. Because we had originally thought here, and it was, wow, but people coming through twenty-seven, it would be nice.
They would see it at the park, you know, I think it would be nice.
So they just need a motion to be able to plant the tree, and then they can get with Kyle.
And then go.
I can motion to help Fountain City Forward plant a Christmas tree. Um, where it is determined that is safe.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else?
I can show you the height, you can see it from the audience.
Alright, um, we get a motion to approve claims of payments.
I make the motion to pay. Approve it, yeah. I make the motion. To pay, claim, pay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hit your gavel.